All right, we have all of the council members. I will call the meeting to order at 5:28, 46 seconds. We will now start with the citizen comments. Citizens, you have four minutes to speak. Council, you have one minute allotted to respond, make a statement or explanation without engaging in a dialogue. Our first person is Michael Forino. Good evening, you have four minutes.
RS 24119 was too good to pass up by the chemicals. And crying out loud, at the pools, at least have people there at the expectedly busy hours that are qualified to administer the chemicals and not just walk around basically saying, "I don't know anything, I just work here." With regard to the police upgrade, I support this, as you should all. I would say when it comes up for a vote, upgrade their technology unanimously. However, just occurred to me that it was just over 12 years ago, the first time I stood at this lecturn when it was across the street, or up the street, rather. This is only half the equation, all right? A failing of this council is you do not address crime, okay? The police, there's too much Killeen and not enough police. This has been a central theme of mine and a passion of mine. I have not heard the council mention crime. The Crime Prevention Committee that I proposed became the Crime Solutions Committee, which devolved into a social experiment that assessed the number one crime in Killeen as being runaway teenage girls. Really? We need more police and we need you on the council and in general, the community, to do whatever we can. This technology is great. Again, this is, it's only half the equation. With Chief Lopez's wise leadership and everything else that goes along with that, you cannot implement a program if you don't have the people to implement it, monitor it, and use it. That is only half the equation. The, there was an article in the paper over the weekend where the crime blotter, as opposed to what's reported are two different things. Again, I don't hear, and in 12 years, I can't recall any of you specifically mentioning crime, crime concerns, or anything. That is far and away not the experience of the average citizen in Killeen. When you have, when Mr. Kilpatrick was still alive, he detailed me a very vital point, and this is going back a couple of years ago. And we have over 1,700 miles of road, probably even more than that. That was the figure that he gave me. That if we reconnect all the roads in Killeen, end to end, they would stretch from here to Portland, Oregon. That's a lot of ground to cover. This technology can only do so much. I don't care if it's cameras, I don't care if it's drones, or whatever. We still need the men and women in uniform to actually personally be present to respond. We do not have the numbers. Technology will only take you so far. Too many times, in too many arenas, have many entities relied on push-button technology. You need the person there. So please, 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 please. This is going on a decade, and you can't say, "Oh, well, that was the last council. That was the council before that." It's the same iteration of apathy when it comes to, "Let's do what we can to recruit." Once again, we are the 19th largest city in Texas. We need to start acting like it. We can't take care of what we have right now. We need to plus up the numbers. I have volunteered, say, "You want to have a recruiting drive? Well, wherever we need to go, we need to go to the fort. We need to go to the college, because unfortunately, you can't be hired as a police officer until you're 21." Whatever it takes, I'll sit at the table and say, "Please be part of the crusade, be part of the solution, not the problem." But we can't solve the problem without the men and women in uniform on the ground, willing to engage, and actually able to patrol neighborhoods and not just do a holding pattern on main thoroughfares. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forino. I do agree, we are, need more police officers. And Chief Lopez and his, his staff have done an excellent job at being at Fort Cabosso's during recruitment, when they're doing the hiring fairs out there, KISD and other places that I have seen them. But I do agree that they are working hard to recruit police officers to work in Killeen. So I agree with you on that. Next, we have Cameron, Cameron Cochran. You have four minutes.
I write doctor on it every week, but I guess some people can't read. So let's continue. Let's talk about the meeting minutes, MN 24016. Last week, the mayor says transparency, we love transparency. She also said that no council member herself had failed to respond to citizen emails, telephone calls, et cetera. You have a District 3 representative, without saying her name, she hasn't responded to five emails, and it's been about three weeks. She admits that she hadn't responded to it, and she laughs at it. It's funny that you want transparency, but you don't even respond to basic emails. You don't even look at the minutes when people ask questions and put those answers in there either. Let's move on. RS 24119, purchase of chemicals for the city pool. According to the city's own website, Long Branch Pool is closed. Junior Service League Spray Pad is closed. However, the newspaper said that this weekend, the water was green at Junior Service League Spray Pad. Do we not have the chemicals, or do we have the chemicals? I don't know, but this looking to purchase more chemicals from a different company. My question is, if we have swimming pools that are closed, why can't we just transfer, put chemicals in the back of a trailer or a van and move it to the next place that's not closed, that's open? Let's try to save some money for once, have some kind of strategic planning. This is July, and now we're trying to find out what kind of chemicals work in the swimming pools? That's sad, very sad. This should have been dealt with back in January, February. But again, this city has no strategic planning capabilities. Let's move on. RS 24120, Stone Tree Bunker renovations. Last week, I mentioned, well, you also approved 9,900, 650,000 for the Stone Tree Irrigation Project. Well, this week, you're seeking 815,389 and $7,500 to help with a bunker renovation so it doesn't fall apart. Why do we even have this course, this golf course under the city? It needs to be sold. If it's making a profit, as I mentioned last week, it's supposed to make $175,000 profit, that's forecasted, for 2024. Sell it so we don't have to worry about it in 2025. That's crazy. My question on this as well is, why are the people paying monthly dues if those dues are not funding the repairs to this golf course? Why are we also, Killeen taxpayers, paying to fix a golf course that we have members that live in Harker Heights, Copperish Cove, and other nearby cities? Where's their fair share? I guess we're not going to see it. Let's move on. RS 24117, library materials. On the agenda is to purchase new library materials. The presentation, the PowerPoint, it failed to show any kind of materials or what it's using the money for. $132,000 is a lot of money. Is this for books, to access certain websites, new computers, licensing fees? Is it for some kind of training, custodial equipment, salaries? I don't know. Kind of vague, since it doesn't include there. Can you at least tell us what this money's going to go for so the taxpayer knows where its money going in and what money is being used for? Also, this is for just fiscal year 2024, sort of like a last-minute ad. How much money they're going to need in 2025? Or is this not needed in 2025? Again, it doesn't say within the, the PowerPoint slide. I wonder if the library has a Bible. If it did, it would say, "Proverbs 6.32, She who commits adultery acts, lacks any sense. She who dares destroys herself as well as others." Thank you.
Thank you for your nice comments, Mr. Leo Gukhaisen. Good evening, sir, you have four minutes. Okay, thank you so kindly. Oh, I apologize, Councilwoman Cobb.
Good evening to the council and constituents. I am District 3 Nina Cobb. Please know that when questions, and when you send your questions, if you send them to multiple persons and they are answered, and the answer is a great answer, there is no need for me to respond. Work will win when wishing won't.
Counsel, Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just wanted to just make a statement. I do agree with the citizen regarding the, addressing the crime and that we are actively working to recruit additional officers. We know the challenges we're having there. But there have been crime town halls that were held in District 1. Council members also formed a Crime Solutions Committee to try to be proactive in a way for that. Certain members here are also advocating against domestic violence and human trafficking, and also supporting our first responders and nonprofit organizations who are actively fighting crime in their own respects. Also, the Downtown Merchants Association has been actively engaging with the police department, who's been helping them to protect their businesses as it relates to crime prevention there as well. And then also with the previous police administration, there was an engagement unit that was formed to help, starting off in the downtown area, to bring more of a police presence back to the north side. And that was accomplished in the previous administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I move on? Melissa Brown, good evening, you have four minutes.
Tell me you want to hear it, or you don't want to hear it from the citizens, without telling me you don't want to hear from the citizens. First, there's all that garbage that you passed last week. And now we've got the proposal for the establishment of the Charter Review Committee, which will consist of nine positions. Each council member plus the mayor will appoint a person. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Where does the ninth person come from? That is not written in there. The committee is going to identify necessary amendments or revisions. When does the committee hear of the entire, from anyone else in the public? Because the citizens are not going to have the opportunity to really address this in depth with the council. Members will be appointed based on a nomination process, and then they should have a background in law, government, business, or community service. Let me tell you, I know a lot of really smart people in the city who are very interested in making sure that it is prosperous and that it is the best place for the city, its residents, its visitors, and its staff, who don't own a business, who don't have a legal background, who've never been involved in government, and don't go out and participate in a lot of public community service. But why is everybody else's voice shut out? So if you're not an important person in the community, let's replace it with that, because that is what this implies. If you don't hold a prominent title, if you don't sound like you're important, then your voice isn't going to be heard, because these are priorities. Or is that the only way to be smart enough? Because I know a lot of people who are not involved in city government who are smarter than some of the people sitting up in front of me right now. Let's move on. Reviewing the entire charter to assess the relevance and effectiveness. I don't have a problem with that. In fact, I think that is what should be done. And then they are responsible for conducting public meetings to solicit feedback. Doesn't say how, doesn't say when, it doesn't say what rules will be followed, but you're outsourcing listening to your constituents. That is what it says. When you say that the committee is responsible for soliciting feedback from the public, you are now outsourcing your responsibility to listen to your constituents. Read what it says in writing and then put yourself in the position. Oh, also, I'd like to know, what does nonpartisan and matters related to city governance mean? And by residents of Killeen, does that mean it's going to be only people who live within the city limits? Or like our bond committee, are we going to allow ETJ members to be on this committee? I would love to know the answers to that. And what does nonpartisan matters related to city governance mean? Because if that means if anybody is interested, then what goes on? If they speak out about it, if they write letters to the editor, if they come up here and they speak to you, that would make them partisan, wouldn't it? So if you're active and you're interested and you know what's going on, you're disqualified. Tell me how that makes sense. It doesn't, but it doesn't surprise me. And then the IBCC update, I would hope that this is invited with open arms. And I would also hope that when you have this discussion, you ask them, "What can the city do for IBCC?" They have been bringing in more business than KEDC on a regular basis, and they never get anything from the city. No incentives whatsoever. I've said we need to restructure. That's, maybe that should be part of what is done in our charter. Stop keeping it out of different chambers. Don't be racist about it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Gonzalez.
Thank you. During the previous discussion that we had, I just want to make sure for a point of clarity, that we did discuss possibly potential options about opening up to citizen feedback for a 30-day period, similar to that program that Ms. Rashawn Smith was over, to be able to be fair and impartial and give our entire citizens an opportunity to engage in our process. That was mentioned during that last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For the record, as you all can see, and for the individuals that is at home, this is a all-minority council, the first one in 400 years. And the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce, most of the members are even a part of it. We support all of their events. So there's virtually impossible, if you look through my left and right, for us to be racist. There's a difference between what the Killeen Chamber does and also the Innovation of Black Chamber. The Killeen Chamber brings in jobs and innovation businesses to their. Innovation Chamber does too, but also the businesses that we do have, they may reestablish, or they may want to have a grand opening, been here for a while. They both have similar jobs, and we have never, ever, to my knowledge, on my term on here, have not listened to any chamber, and that includes the Hispanic Chamber. And we're hoping that other chambers and different ethnicity open up in the city of Killeen, because we are a very diverse city. And we, the council, we welcome that. So anyone else have a comment before I move forward? Councilmember Adams.
I just want to clarify for folks. The definition of partisan is regarding political parties. So nonpartisan discussion is discussion that's not related to whatever political organization that you're a member of. It's just a general organization, because this council is nonpartisan. So that's what that relates to. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And we will move on with Mr. Sean Price. Good evening, Mr. Price, you have four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Let me get this up here. Right. Just like to thank three men. Thomas Jefferson Benjamin Franklin and John Adams for bringing us the Declaration of Independence. Since it's that time of the year, right? Remember our founders, those that gave us the freedom that we so lovingly enjoy, right, as Americans? I rise underneath Section 551.042 and Section 551.007. So my comments are all underneath those color of law. RS 241, or 119, the pool chemicals, right? There, there are several companies you can get these. I used to transport them from, of course, the Canada to Chicago. So this is an exorbitant amount for this type of stuff. 80,000 pounds, you can get it for about that same price. But that's, you know, that's a lot of chemicals. I don't know why we're spending that much money or why we should have to. I think there's a $40,000 transfer payment that they already have. And I don't know why, if we've got the money to spend for the chemicals, why they're not being utilized, or why the funds aren't being spent to buy the product so that people can enjoy the pools that we pay for. RS 24117, will any of these, out of the $132,000, will these buy the LGBTQ porno books for kindergarten through fifth-grade student, or kids? I'm opposed to that. I don't, I don't think that we should buy any of these types of books that are being utilized across the nation. And I'm sure that everybody have seen it, that this is in our school systems out there, and that they're buying it, and that the Department of Education says that this is education for teaching about all kinds of lifestyles in kindergarten through fifth grade. So I don't think it would be appropriate for Killeen to do the same thing that other cities are doing. RS 24120, renovations of the golf course and/or 121. The airfield, Skylark Airfield, I'm just wondering, how many passengers come through there? Can anybody tell me that? How many passengers come through Skylark? I don't think we have any passengers come through there. I think it's a hobby field. I think that we've got a few Cessnas come through there, and, you know, people practice their pilot license maybe, but we don't make pilots, we don't do anything. It's a hobby field, this is not an airport. Just my, you know, just my thought on it. I think we should sell that, and the golf course should be sold off to whoever wants to operate it. We're losing a lot of money as a city. The Charter Review, if you want anybody on there, I'll put my hand in up for it. I'll get on there. We'll do the Charter Review, we'll go through there, we'll make some stuff happen. You can count me in. Mrs. Gonzalez, I toss my head in there for you as one of your constituents in your area. For the $13 million that we're going to spend for the police force, that's money well spent. I think we need the additional police. They got to have the backup now, because one or two cops, they get swarmed by 30 or 40 people out of an apartment building. I see it quite often. So I like it when they come in deep, and they got like six or seven cars out there. They've got their support, because people will just dive-bomb them. And it's crazy what these guys got to go through. So I'm on their side for that, for spending that money. DS 24, that's the 042, that's for the police. For the 24008 DQ or RQ, I'm just wanting, okay. Thank you, yeah.
Do council have any comments before we move forward? All right. Thank you all for sharing your comments with the council. Madam Secretary, discuss items for regular city council meeting on July 9, 2024 minutes.
MN 24016, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of June 11, 2024.
Thank you so much. Resolutions, council, you have two times each to speak for five minutes. Madam Secretary.
RS 24117, consider a memorandum resolution increasing the previously authorized spending limit for the purchase of library materials from Ingram Book Company from $90,000 to $132,785 for fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. McNair, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, are you?
Thank you, I'm fine. I have with me this evening Mrs. Deanna Frazee, the Director of Library Services.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'll go through the presentation, which is very brief. It will answer at least two of the questions, I believe, and then Mrs. Frazee will discuss again and refresh from our previous presentation the type of materials that the library purchases for the citizens. In December 2023, council approved a TechSmartBuy contract with Ingram Library Services for the purchase of library materials in an amount not to exceed $90,000. None of this money goes towards the cost of staffing the library. In May 2024, Library Service canceled a contract for $42,785 with Baker &amp; Taylor due to poor fulfillment rates. The funds for leasing were then transferred to the appropriate account for purchase of library materials. Staff is recommending that the transferred funds be used to increase the TechSmart contract purchase limit in an amount not to exceed $132,785 for the purchase of additional library materials from Ingram Services. Increasing the purchase limit will allow the library to maintain state accreditation. I do want to note that this is not an additional $132,000, nor is it an increase to the budget. We're simply taking the money that we have from the canceled contract and increasing the spending limit on the remaining contract. So it conforms to City of Killeen purchasing policy. It is a recurring expense. The second question that I said will be answered in a presentation. For fiscal year '25, it's an estimated $115,000 for library materials. And so far, according to Mrs. Frazee, we spent approximately $68,000 with that first $90,000 that was set aside. And we recommend that council authorize the increase of the purchase limit with Ingram Library Services in an amount not to exceed $132,785.
Mrs. Frazee.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start by defining library materials. That are, those are fiscal materials, books, DVDs, although we don't purchase a whole lot of those. It is primarily books. We no longer do audiobooks at all. Those are downloadable, and it comes from a different account. The library materials we purchase are based on collection development policies. We review a lot of materials. There are some review tools out there, Kirkus Reviews, New York Times Book Reviews, Boya School Library Journal, and we read those, looking for positive reviews. And to give us an idea, not every book is of every, of interest to every community. I would not buy a book on sheep sharing, for example, for Killeen, because we don't really raise a lot of sheep or share sheep here. However, we do look for books that will be of high interest. We also, I will say, we're not looking for books to sexualize young children. That is not an appropriate thing. We need books that, first off, they want to read. They would really rather read about the bears, you know, having a picnic or something. And we want books that interest them, engage them with reading. So that's what we're looking for when we review books and when we, or when we read book reviews and when we select our materials. We also require that parents be with children under eight and under when they are in the library. First off, because we can't be the children's parents for them. And second, because we need them to be engaged with their children's reading. So when a child checks a book out at our library with their parent or guardian, that would should be something that the parent or guardian has looked at and also agreed with. We do buy a wide variety of books, and we do look at what the interest level is. But we want parents to be engaged, because we cannot be the parents of other people's children, any more than we want other people acting as parent of our children.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any questions from the council? Thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Madam Secretary.
RS 24118, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a contract amendment for the purchase of a transfer station crane from Waste Systems Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $5,316.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Madam Mayor, City Council. This is a change order to the original document, amendment to the original document. Back in, the transfer station is operated with two cranes that help us to pack our trailers to maximum capacity. Over the years, we've used a crane from Biltwright to do this. This year, we had a change in that, we had a better offer, and a proven crane by other cities that we wanted to use, and it came in a much better rate for us. March 26, 2024, this body approved RS 240459, the purchase of this crane from Waste Systems Equipment in an amount not to exceed $310,556. After the site visit, mostly awarded with the crane was, the bid was awarded, two-way system, the site visit. The Biltwright crane is built with an internal soft-start system, and it allows a power current to be slowly introduced into the system instead of that 400 amps being wrapped in there as soon as you start the engine. So this crane does not have that, so it's going to cost us additional $5,000 to get that soft start added to this, so we don't blow breakers every time we start the crane. That's the purpose of it. These are the cranes, even with the $5,000 additional, we're still coming in $73,000 less than the next closest bidder to the, in the bidding process. And this item was budgeted for 400 four hundred. When we originally did the CIP, we budgeted four hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars for this project. And so we're still, even with this five thousand dollar change order, we're still a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than what we had budgeted for. So this is a budgeted item. And the recommendation is that you authorize the increase of funding through amendment number one to include the soft start system with the purchase of the transfer station crane and authorize the city manager or designee to execute amendment number one in an amount not to exceed five thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars to Waste Systems Equipment for a total of three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. There are no questions for you. Counsel, our next speaker will be Assistant City Manager Wilson. She has RS dash twenty-four one-one-nine, RS twenty-four one-twenty. We'll start with RS twenty-four one-one-nine. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-one-nine, consider a memorandum resolution purchasing aquatic chemicals through a buy board cooperative contract number seven zero one twenty-three, Commercial Swim Aquatics, in an amount of one hundred four thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This agenda item is to purchase aquatic chemicals through Commercial Swim Aquatics. City of Colleen operates three commercial aquatic facilities, Family Aquatic Center, Long Branch Pool, and the Junior Service League Spray Park. All three open Memorial Day weekend until Labor Day weekend each year. Without adequate pool chemicals, the city aquatic facilities will have to close to protect the safety and well-being of patrons and city staff working at the facility. The last service agreement was approved by city council in April of twenty-twenty-three with Progressive Commercial. Progressive Commercial can no longer fulfill the city's needs for aquatic chemicals. Therefore, staff is requesting the purchase from Commercial Swim Aquatics through their buy board cooperative contract seven oh one dash two-three. Commercial Swim Aquatics will provide aquatic chemicals for the total annual estimated cost of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty cents, which is the same cost as Progressive Commercial. The city has recently worked with Commercial Swim Aquatics for aquatic projects. We've received excellent customer service and they've been very responsive and quick to address our needs. The current amount committed for the chemical purchase as of May fourteenth of twenty-twenty-four is forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Of that committed amount, forty thousand was encumbered under a PO to Progressive Commercial. Upon approval of Commercial Swim Aquatics, this PO will be closed and remaining funds will be encumbered to Commercial Swim. Staff is recommending that we, that council approve the purchase of aquatic chemicals for, through the buy board cooperative seven oh one dash two-three through Commercial Swim Aquatics in amount of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty cents. This contract will start about August and will run through next August. So this does supply chemicals to all three facilities for about a year. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Wilson. I see no questions at this time? Thank you.
All right.
Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-two-zero, consider a memorandum resolution rejecting bids received for bid number twenty-four thirty-eight, Stone Tree Golf Club bunker renovations.
All right. As the city secretary said, this agenda item is rejecting bids received for bid twenty-four dash thirty-eight for the Stone Tree Golf Club bunker renovations. On May sixth, twenty-twenty-four, two bids were received for the Stone Tree Golf bunker renovation project. Those bidders were Verdidity LLC and Greenscape Six. Those two bid amounts were almost five hundred thousand and eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Both bids were over what was currently budgeted in the CIP project's construction account. We had about a hundred and seventy-three thousand for the total cost of the project. So we're suggesting that we reject these bids at this time. The state law and the bid document allows the governing body to reject all bids. Staff recommends that city council reject the bids received for bid twenty-four dash thirty-eight for Stone Tree Golf Club bunker renovations.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Do you have a question, Mr. Boyd? Councilwoman Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick question. If the city determines to do this work in-house, how soon can we expect to start that work?
That's something that we've discussed with Trune. We'd like to use them. They currently operate our golf course and we'd like to use them as kind of a consultant to see if this is something that we can complete in-house. We would try it with one bunker using staff and that consultant that would be contracted through Trune. So we're gonna, we're gonna see if we can do it fairly quickly.
Sure.
And then we'll follow up with council and let you know how it goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-two-one, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Harrison Roofing Company Incorporated for the hangar roof rehabilitation project at Skylark Field in the amount of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents.
Mr. Wilson, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. First, let me say that Skylark Field absolutely is an airport. There's, last month, last month, we had nineteen hundred and thirty-two takeoff and landing operations. There's three businesses that operate out of there. There are sixty-six airplanes based there. Anybody that knows anything about economic development or the lifeblood of a community knows that a GA airport is very important. So Skylark Field is a very important part of this community. When businesses are looking to locate an industry or looking to locate to a city, one of the first things they look at is a GA airport, not, not commercial airports, but GA to see if their private jets can be accommodated. Of those nineteen hundred and thirty-two in June, in fact, June was a low month, there was at least twenty or twenty-five of those that were either jets or twin-engine aircraft. Those are not hobby folks flying their private airplanes. So I just wanted to say that upfront. The project that I'm briefing tonight is a hangar roof rehabilitation at Skylark Field. City Colleen owns two large commercial use hangars at Skylark Field Airport. These hangars are currently leased and occupied by active businesses that generate revenue for the airport. By the way, the airport does, is self-sufficient, makes its own money, is, does, does not cost the City Colleen a penny. Over the last several years, they began to develop roof issues and despite frequent repairs by staff, they continue to deteriorate. We've now reached a point where we no longer effectively repair them in-house. They've become a safety hazard to the tenants leasing them and aircraft that are storing them. This project will consist of a full roof replacement of one of the hangars, which is approximately thirty-five years old, and the second hangar is in need of significant repairs. We solicited quotes through the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative and TIPS National Purchasing Cooperative, receiving quotes from Harrison Roofing Incorporated, R&amp;L Global, and Roof Connect National Roofing Services. After a thorough review of each quote by the airport staff, Harrison Roofing was selected as preferred choice, offering the best value and being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Staff's recommendation is to award the contract to Harrison Roofing Incorporated through TIPS National Purchasing Cooperative Contract number two-nine-zero-two-four-one-five in the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents. Staff recommends that the city council approve the contract with Harrison Roofing through the TIPS National Cooperative Contract number two-zero-nine-two-four-one-five in the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents, and recommends that the city council authorize the city manager who is designated to execute all contract documents and any and all change orders with any amount set by state and local law, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-two-two, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for an airport improvement program grant for the taxiway E relocation project at Colleen Regional Airport.
Yes, ma'am. Just a little bit of background, the portion of taxiway E at the Colleen Regional Airport is in need of rehabilitation. Due to changes in the FAA's taxiway design standards, any rehabilitation of this taxiway now requires a relocation. The city applied for and received an FAA airport improvement grant in the amount of four hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and three dollars on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three to be used in the design phase of this project. Project included administration, surveying service, geotech services, design services, bidding services, and other engineering fees for the relocation of the taxiway. The FAA has now notified the city that will receive a grant for the construction phase of the, of the project. The grant will include funding from the AIP, the FAA discretionary, and a community funding grant supported by Congressman Fluger. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Congressman Fluger and his staff for this support. The actual grant will not be issued until after the bid's been received and reviewed. The grant offer will then be based on the accepted bid amount. To comply with FAA timeline requirements for returning signed grant offers, staff's requesting city council approve resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the grant agreement and relocated documents pertaining to this grant. Grant will be funded ninety percent of the cost by the grant. The ten percent match will come from the FAA Passage Facility Charge Program application that was approved by the FAA on February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three with absolutely no impact to the Aviation Operation Fund or fund balance and absolutely no debt, no cost to the city. Re-recommendation is that the city council approve a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute all and any and all required documents including all amendments pertaining to the Federal Aviation's Airport Improvement Program Grant for the taxiway E relocation project at the Colleen Regional Airport. And be happy to answer any questions.
There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-two-three, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for an airport improvement program grant for the terminal security improvements project at Colleen Regional Airport.
A little bit of background, again, the city applied and received, replied for and received a Federal Aviation FAA Airport Improvement Grant in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three to be used for the design phase of this project. Project involves the replacing of our current airport security system, including CCTV cameras and the access control system and all associated hardware and software. The FAA has now notified the city that will receive an AIP grant for the construction phase of the, of the project. The actual grant, again, will not be issued until after bid's been received and reviewed. The grant offer will then be based off whatever the accepted bid amount is. To comply, to comply with FAA timeline requirements for returning signed grant offers, staff's requesting the city council approve a resolution authorizing the city manager is designated to execute the grant agreement and all related documents pertaining to this grant offer. Be happy to answer any questions.
There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-two-four, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for an airport improvement program grant for the terminal mechanical improvements project at Colleen Regional Airport.
The city applied for and received a Federal Aviation Administration grant in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three to be used for the design of the terminal mechanical improvement projects at the airport. Project included administration, design services, bidding service, and other engineer fees. The FAA has now notified the city that we will receive an AIP grant for the construction phase of the terminal mechanical improvement project. Actual grant will not be issued until bid's received and, and then the amount's been determined the grant be offered based off the accepted bid amount. Construction phase comprised of various components, including the replacement of the original baggage claim carousels and associated belt system, upgrading the baggage belt, control, hardware and software, replacing the preconditioned air onboard bridges one and six, and the replacement of our emergency generator. To comply with FAA timeline requirements for the returning the signed grant offers, staff's requesting city council approve a resolution, resolution authorizing the city manager or his designated to execute the grant agreement and all related documents to this grant offer. The grant will, will fund ninety percent of the cost. Ten percent of the match will come from the FAA Passage Facility Charge Program that was approved on February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Again, absolutely no impact to the Aviation Operation Fund or fund balance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. There are no questions. Thank you and your team for your hard work.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four one-two-five, consider a memorandum resolution establishing a charter review committee.
Attorney Clemens.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. This is your charter review committee item. Just a little bit of background. On June eighteenth of this year, council directed staff to proceed with the establishment of a charter review committee. The charter is the fundamental governing document of a home rule city in Texas. The charter may not be changed more than every two years, and the charter was last amended May twenty-twenty-two. The charter is amended by popular vote at an election, and the council may establish a process to formulate the ballot issues, including establishing a review committee. So the, the proposal here, this goes through the, a summary of what the proposal is. There was a citizen, citizen comment earlier asking how this proposal, you know, individual questions about how this proposal is set up. And at this point, you, the council, if you decide to go forward with the charter review committee, you are completely in control of this. So this isn't, at this point, it is just a proposal and you can decide how you want to set this up. But the proposal calls for the purpose and scope for the committee to conduct a thorough review of, of existing charter and identify necessary amendments and gather input from the community. That could be, gathering input from the community could be done in a number of ways, but it just, it does say gather input from the community. But there could be public hearings. There could be surveys, things that have already been mentioned, but there's various ways that could be done. Composition is called for eight to nine members. The mayor and each council member nominate one member. And there, it was noted earlier that obviously there are seven council members and one mayor, so that would be eight people. If each of you nominated one, if there was, if you wanted an odd number for nine, then the whole council could nominate and appoint an additional member. The qualifications in the proposal are that they're a background in law, government, business, or community service, and that they would be residents of Colleen. Again, something council could discuss further and make a determination on. And the timeline of reporting says that appointments shall be made within thirty days following approval of the proposal, and that the committee submits final report of recommendations to council within six months. On that, I would make a note, if you are looking at a May twenty-twenty-five election, and I'll, and I have a few, a slide in here and a couple slides that shows what that timeline would look like. I, I, six months with the committee, it would not work for a May election. I would likely recommend that the committee come back by the end of November to the full council so that council would have it December and January to call the election by the end of January or early February. And those ballot, that, those ballot, and those ballot measures could be finalized at that point. So the procedure for charter amendments is that you review the charter and review, and prepare amendments, and then draft proposition language because an amendment, and it may not contain more than one subject. So you can't put, you don't put on the ballot the whole charter document and have red lines. What you do is issue by issue. There's a question for the electors to, to vote on. And so then you would call your special election by ordinance, publish legal notices, hold the election, and then council would order, council order declaring the amendment is adopted and certify, certify that amendment to the Secretary of State. The timeline for a May twenty-twenty-five election is, the last day to call that election will be February fourteenth. That's the absolute last day to call the election. Normally, the city calls elections end of January timeframe for the May election, and May third, twenty-twenty-five is the uniform election date. So your options, establish a charter review committee of citizens in accordance with the council member proposal, or not establish a charter review committee. And I'm here for any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Madam Secretary, you can move to the next item.
Madam Mayor, I believe Councilmember Segarra.
Oh, did you correct?
Has a comment.
Yeah. Can you see it?
I was not sure. Sorry about that.
My question is, and I know I've been through this several times, and as I mentioned earlier, I think it's important that staff be part of this. So out of those eight members, are we including staff or not?
I would not recommend that staff, I mean, it, it's up to you, but I would not recommend that staff be actually on the committee, but staff would be involved, and that's what we've done in the past with committee or a full council review, staff, including legal and other staff. I mean, there's various sections of the charter that are highly financed. There are different, different sections and those different departments when we're reviewing. If we're doing section by section, when we're reviewing those sections, the various staff that that applies to would be asked to be involved in that process of the review.
And, and the reason is, because I know that a few times that I've been through it, what happens a lot of times is we end up repeating that same process. And I know a lot of people may not be familiar. So for example, I know we've talked about term limits before. We talked about going from two years to three years, and we get so far and then we discover something. we discover something, and then the council ends up backing away from that because ultimately, you know, we heard the information from the staff, and it didn't, we didn't like that, you know? And so if we had at least, and I, I don't know if we keep records of that or anything, of that information that we discussed, I think it would be a lot of help, because there's certain, you know, rules that apply behind everything. It's not just saying, you know, an example, oh, we want to go from two years to three years, and I know that was a big discussion we had, we went through it, and then we found out if you do that, you have to do runoff elections. And then when we discovered that, everybody says, no, we don't want to do that. And so if we had all that information ahead of time, then when we're doing this charter, we don't take it all the way through, only to discover something that we weren't aware of, and so I think that's important. Like I say, I, I, I don't know if we have any records of all that discussion in the past, but it would be nice to have, to save, because everybody that comes out is going to be from citizens, new, and they're just going to be throwing things out there only for later on to be rejected, and then we're going to make them feel like, you know what, we did something and, and nothing happened, and it's because they didn't have all that information, so.
And I, I, from our last review in twenty, for the twenty-two election, I do have the records of what was discussed, I was involved in that.
Thank you. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand or collect. Councilmember Solomon.
Again, I'm still trying to understand why do we would need to, to have this again. I know we just passed a little over two years in doing this, and if we do go on, go through with this, we need to look at more than two years. I think we got an article earlier about, you know, I think Dallas does it like every ten years. So I just think that this is so, so early to do this, and I just think that we need to be careful what we're doing with the, with the charter. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams, you brought this item before the council, and I already know when I speak, it's going to be comments, but I just have to be true to myself when it comes to this. My, I have two concerns, and one of my concerns is that we have over one hundred and fifty-eight thousand residents in Colleen. I look at the voting records, I look at the events that we hold, and I hear from council and other staff, and everyone that put all their time and energy into any event that we hold. It's, it's very important, I stated this before. The charter is like the Constitution of the United States of America, whatever we decide as a council will have an effect, not only because we only, I don't know if you're going to change, I'm, I don't know, that's just somebody throwing stuff out there, I'm not even sure if you're going to change how long you can serve on the council, which I disagree with that, because we don't want the same ideals, the same thoughts, that's the purpose of opening it up, you run your twelve years, if you be so lucky as Councilmember Segarra and I to be elected as mayor, and you give that opportunity, set out a year and give the opportunity to other residents, since we're for the people, and we want their input. So when you have over one hundred and fifty-eight thousand people, and it's important to get their input, because I believe in that, and it's very hard to even get them to participate in anything that we do. That's one of my concern, if you're going to do it, we got to find a better way to do it, because it goes out on the water bill. Our city staff communication does a tremendous job in reference to putting it on Facebook and also just sending it out through video, so if we really going to do it and give the residents some say, we need to find a better way to market with what we have and also avenues. And if we're going by the timeline, if we want it in May, that's just me throwing some thoughts out there, take it, leave it, I really don't care, but it's just how I feel about it. We really need to start now, if it passed today, on getting this information out to let people know that there's a committee, and I know we're going to appoint them, but, but shouldn't we have some kind of process that if anybody would like to apply for it in our district or at large, that they have the opportunity to fill out something, or just go somewhere and say, I'm interested, these are my qualifications? That's just food for thought, just food for thought. And my last concern is, is it has to come back to the council. And one of my recommendations is, if we're going to take this time to reach out to our residents to get their input, why we just can't take their recommendation without a charter review committee, and the council work on what they want? Because if I really want to see a change in the charter, I am going to take out the time, and I'm going to find out if I know about it, and I'm going to give my input, because if it comes back to me, I agree with Councilmember Segarra, and I know the process and how long that it takes to do this, because I heard someone said that the staff, they got to do it anyway, but the staff will be double tapped. They got to work with that committee coming in before they even present it to us, they're going to have to go through it. And then once it get to us, as Councilmember Segarra say, they got to go through it again, we're going to make all these changes. So for it or against it, I just really want us to think this through and have a, just not to do it just to be doing it, but have a way that we can market it, that all the residents, if possible, I'm not saying it's possible, they can have an input, and even with the charter review committee, if it passed today, that all residents would like to apply for, just not us just going to say, I want Susan or Barbara, that if they want to put in their application, talk about their qualifications, then you have more to choose from. I think that is a fair process, but that's just my opinion. You can raise your hand, it's not working.
The, the intent was?
It's Mayor Protem, it's Mayor, Mayor Protem Gonzales.
So, yes, ma'am, I do agree with that, and as I mentioned before, we've had many citizens who have presented their recommendations, or they've given us feedback, and I do think it's important to get that from those citizens that are interested in this review process. Housekeeping purposes, it is important to review it and update it where it's needed. Again, I'm going to stand on the fact that I feel that the recommendation, according to the way Ms. Rashawn Smith runs that program, where there's a thirty-day submission process with some specific parameters, that we receive that information and find some way to filter it out so that we can review. That opens it up to all citizens to be able to at least have an opportunity to submit, and then we can then review and make that decision. I, I do stand on that, because at least that way, all citizens can be involved at that point. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I didn't mean it from the perspective to make the staff have to work more, if they want to go be District One slash Mayor Protem Gonzales, if we want to be in connection with the community when it comes to them turning in their application, or just sending you an email, that's something we should do, and not put the burden on the staff to do it, because that'll keep us connected to our, our constituents, because that's what, who we're doing it for, not the staff to do our job for us, that's just my opinion. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think, just like all the other committees, where we pick individuals, we each have a vote, or whether each district person has a, it would work, I think it would work the same way, and I think we all reach out to our constituents anyway, once we see if they're interested or to tell people to apply, so I think that'll be covered, it should have laid that concern, that it's not going, and I agree that once we, if we approve this and start, that we do market it, tell people who are interested, or that the process is going on and then to participate, and I don't think it stops us from receiving emails from our constituents to pass on to the committee, so I think there are no, I, I don't want to kill this because of, well, we perceive restrictions, but, because I don't think we have those, and I, and that committee can come back and say no recommendations, that committee can come back and say wait until November, which, like the city attorney said, is still ultimately our decision as well.
Yes, sir, and I want to just, just address something you stated. If one citizen has to go through a process and fill it out, or whatever this council decide, all of them have to, because it's so much easier for me as a resident, I should be able to email my council member and tell them I want to be on it. Staff shouldn't have even play a part in this something, because once this vote is decided, this council decide that, and, and this committee is not an ongoing committee. It may be, I'm assuming you want an ad hoc committee, I'm, I'm trying to under, well, that was never, that word was never used, and I want to, if we're going to be transparent, just put it out there, and, and that means that it's going to come to a point, if that is the case, and an ad hoc committee is, is for whatever that purpose is, and once that purpose is completed, they'll go, they'll go away. So there's a difference between that and a subcommittee. If you want to be consistent with the subcommittee, that's fine, too. And my last concern is this, I heard something tonight, yeah, this evening. I don't want to come across that the council is forming a committee, and the people that we select, they are the ones that something that we really want to do, instead of saying it from this dais, we allow them to say it for us, because it came across as if we was doing something wrong, when it's our responsibility, and that, I don't want to hear the word, well, since we formed this committee, this is what the committee want. Because the bottom line is, even with a committee with nine people, you have over one hundred and fifty thousand other people, and I just hope when it does come back to us, if this council approved this, that nine individuals on a charter review is not going to decide along with this council the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years for the future of Colleen, even once we get it. I know y'all are going to say, put it on the ballot, but I don't think that's fair, you got to go back again and make sure that everyone had a say, even if they was not on that charter review committee. With that being said, anybody else? All right? No, please let him go, he gonna, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Boy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't say what's, what's on my mind. I've always believed that the city needed to, or needs to have a very robust discussion on this charter. Again, we are a growing city, at some point we'll be at one hundred and seventy-five thousand and then two hundred thousand plus. We're at a place where, of course, the way the charter is written, it works for our city. At the end of the day, it works, it's operating, we're, we're acting by it, but my question is, is it really what's best for our city moving forward? And I don't know all the dynamics to that, but I'm just curious to have a, a robust community, a discussion to see what broadly the community thinks about how the city is structured and how it can be improved for the future. So I don't have any specifics to add to it, but just in, in, in understanding growth and how things change over time, and reviewing this chart, especially when it first came on the council, I think it's, it's time for a very robust discussion. I appreciate that we started that process in twenty twenty-one, when it first came on, but I, I, I just think there's, it needs to be broader, there needs to be more broad discussion on this involving the community. I do think that the recommendations outlined by staff or the council members selecting an individual is, is great, and I do appreciate the qualifications behind it, because we're dealing with city charter or government-related business, and so I think those things are appropriate, and hopefully we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boy, for your transparency, your good points, and I'll come back to you, Councilmember Solomon. Okay, that's Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And just one last question, I know that the previous year, I think it was two years ago, we had to review it, because there was certain things that had to be changed, language that had to be changed, and I think, I couldn't remember, it had to conform to, was it state law or something like that, if you remember?
I know one thing was regarding annexation, and so our annexation provisions were outdated at that time, I knew.
Yeah, and that's got it started, because these are, and, and this time, I don't think we have anything that's required from the state or anything, right? There's.
I haven't done a thorough review yet, as we haven't started, but I don't have anything at this time that I would be recommending, that I, that I know of offhand that needs to be changed.
And, and the reason I bring that up is because I know that we've been trying to communicate with the state to figure out how we can fix, because I think there, there's, there's a problem with our charter, and I don't know, I know when we talk to the state, it's something that they may have to fix, and it had to do with, you know, Proposition A, when the city council turned it down and originally, but it got in the ballot, and, you know, it, we had to put it in the ballot even though we were against it, you know, and, and so we were trying to fix that thing, and so the confusion was, was that designated by the charter, or was that something that the state had, you know, they require that?
You're talking about the initiative ordinance process that is set out by charter, and the city, this, the city initiative ordinance process allows, there's no, there's no allowance for staff or council to make a determination that they believe something is in violation of another law, and so they wouldn't allow it to go to the electors, and there is case law on that as well.
So if, if something from the state was, you know, we were going against the state?
I believe it would require state action on that part.
Yeah, and that, and that's where I'm getting at, because I think that, my point is that if, if, if the state does take action on it, because we've been lobbying them, and we start this charter process now, and then we can come back and change it, we couldn't be able to go back and make that amendment until two years from now.
That's correct. You, if you had an election in May twenty twenty-five, you would have to wait another two years to have another election.
Yeah, because my concern is, we're trying to lobby them to see if we can fix that, and then if it does happen, we'd have to wait until to change it, so just wanted to point that out.
And thank you, sir, that was a, a good point. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To Mr., to Councilmember Segarra's point, or let me just ask you, was you, are you referring to where we close the loophole of that? And so you're saying that we would just need to wait on the, the results of what's happening right now?
Well, I always thought that there was a loophole in that, that needed to be closed, because, you know, it, our citizens sometimes don't understand that, and if, if you have an election and they vote in favor of something, and they don't understand why the council is not in favor of it, it's because we're required to put that in accordance to our charter and the state to put that on the ballot, even though we're against it. And so we saw what happened, not just through our city, but other cities, and so I think there is a loophole that if, if the state says that something is illegal, and we know that, then we shouldn't have, we shouldn't put that on the ballot to confuse people, to say, you know what, we, we're going to put it on the ballot, even though it's against state law, even though against, it went against the council, but we, whatever we put on the ballot should be passed, and I don't think that's right, because it confuses people. And so that is the loophole that I think that we, we've been trying to lobby the state, we've got some receptive ears about that because of everything that's happened, and my concern is if it does change, and then we have to come back and change the charter. And my question was, we have to wait two years, because we already, so like I say, two years ago, we had to do it because it was a state requirement, there are things that needed to be changed down there. This time, there is really nothing, and so we're just changing it for our benefit as a council or a city, but when something does come through the pipeline, whether it's that or something else, then we have to go back and wait, you know, unless there's some kind of exception for that, I don't know if there is or not, so.
No, I know of no exception that would allow you to come back quicker with another charter revision with, earlier than two years.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Segarra. Thank you, council, for being just, sharing your concerns and your opinion with the staff and also with the residents, but I stand on what I said, and I guess you do, too. It is not our responsibility to push the responsibility on changing the charter on anyone else. We, the council, because it's coming back, should make that decision, but I support next week, whatever the vote is, the majority. Madam Secretary. Items of discussion at workshop, council, you get two times each to speak for five minutes.
D S twenty-four, zero, four, two. Discuss contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for police technology upgrade.
Good evening, Chief Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Today, we will discuss K P D proposals to transition to Axon, a leading provider of connected public safety technologies, and the field of law enforcement, the need for advanced technology to enhance public safety, department- safety, department efficiency, and community trust has never been greater. As part of our commitment to maintaining the higher standards of service and accountability, KPD wants to take advantage of and integrate Axon's cutting-edge technology solutions and implement them into our daily operations. Axon's comprehensive suite of tools includes body worn cameras, digital evidence management systems, and real-time data analytics. These innovations are designed to improve the effectiveness and transparency of KPD, and foster stronger relationships with the community we serve. Throughout this presentation, we will explore the various components of Axon's technology, how they will be implemented, and the anticipated benefits for the department and the public. We've also addressed any questions and concerns regarding this transition. Here in the audience tonight, we have Mr. Danny Thalen from Axon to answer any technical questions, and Chief Donahue to answer any questions you may have to our previous body worn camera systems. The Colleen Police Department is committed to enhancing law enforcement capabilities through advanced technologies that align with our operational needs and strategic goals. Driven by, driven by Colleen's dynamic urban growth and diverse community needs, our dedication to ensuring resident safety remains unwavering. Embracing innovative solutions such as body worn cameras, TASER devices, and digital evidence management systems is essential to fulfilling our mission effectively. This slide illustrates some of the gaps and limitations we currently have in KPD. I will provide examples in each bullet point. Under integration challenges, I have three points. The first point is complexity. Our current technology systems do not integrate well with each other, creating data silos. My second point is interoperability. Employees have to access several different systems to do their jobs. A good point I want to make this Saturday, I rode patrol, one of the day shift officers, and the officer had to sign into five different systems to do one task. My third point is IT support. The IT department spends a lot of time in our building maintaining our technology to ensure our systems are working correctly. The next bullet point is training requirements. Due to our various systems, training employees to use technology effectively isn't easy. The next bullet is cost consideration. Our current systems incur a lot of substantial maintenance costs and labor and materials for maintaining and updating old technology. Under the data management bullet, we have several issues. KPD, as a police department, produces tremendous amounts of data. Additionally, we are concerned with data quality to ensure that is accurate, consistent, and reliable. And data storage issues are the biggest concerns due to the number of videos we have to maintain for an indefinite amount of time due to convictions and appeals process. The next bullet point is a very important citizen's concern, and that is privacy and ethical behavior. As a city government and police department, we must safeguard sensitive information against breaches and unauthorized access. Additionally, proper audit procedures ensure that technology is used ethically and respects civil liberties. Under delayed response time bullets, there are several issues. Number one is that communication lags can hinder response times. Delays in information gathering can impact decision-making and operation.
Chief Lopez, hold on. If you have your phone on or video, please mute your phone, because you're disrupting the meeting. Thank you. I apologize, but we'll continue.
Delays in information gathering can impact decision-making and operational efficiency. If we can't receive accurate information during dispatch or when the employee is en route to the scene, we can improve response times and secure the correct resources to handle the scene. The most serious issue is our limited situational awareness. In law enforcement, the lack of real-time data and insights can affect situational awareness during incidents. Also, incomplete or outdated information can lead to poor decision-making by employees and supervisors. Under, under the insufficient evidence collection and storage bullet point, we have to ensure three things. First, data integrity is a priority for legal reasons. We must ensure that the collected evidence remain untampered and authentic. My second point is that we need a cloud-based storage solution for additional evidence to, to reduce the time it takes to handle it and reduce IT labor hours. And lastly, we need efficient systems for retrieving and managing evidence. My last point on this slide is difficulty in crime analysis and prevention. We currently lack advanced analytical tools to predict and prevent crimes effectively. We face challenges in correlating the data from multiple sources to identify crime patterns. This slide illustrates the benefits of switching to Axon. Let's discuss the streamlined evidence processing point. Axon's technology will reduce employees' time in processing evidence, allow them to focus on other critical tasks. Faster evidence and processing leads to quicker case resolutions, which enhances overhaul efficiency. Under enhanced data management, Axon offices improved data management capabilities, ensuring secure storage and easy access to crucial evidence. Efficient tax automation is a great reason to switch to Axon, because it reduces manual workloads, allowing officers to focus on higher priority tasks. We will greatly enhance our real-time crime center capabilities by switching to Axon, since all our systems will be integrated into one ecosystem. We gain the ability to use real-time data analysis and threat identification. It improves situational awareness and enables employees to make more informed decisions based on up-to-date information. Axon Auto Transcribe is a big time saver for employees. Axon automatically transcribes body camera footage, which saves employees significant time in report writing. It ensures accurate transcription of footage, which can be crucial for case documentation. Axon Evidence is a centralized digital evidence system that reduces the time employees spend handling digital evidence. It streamlines the evidence management process, making tracking and accessing evidence easier. Axon Respond is an employee safety component that allows real-time situational awareness and remote access to live feeds to an employee at the scene, which is something we don't have right now. Supervisors will have real-time situational awareness and remote access to live feeds. It enhances incident response times through better information and coordination. And lastly, community engagement. Axon strengthens community relations through transparent practices. Axon My90 is an engagement tool designed to bridge the gap between law enforcement agencies and the communities they serve. It works by collecting feedback through confidential surveys. My90 uses various types of surveys. For an example, after interacting with law enforcement, post-contact surveys would be sent automatically to community members, allowing for immediate feedback. Public surveys can be distributed via social media, websites, or community events to gather broader community sentiment. And confidential employee surveys can be sent to employees to provide feedback on their work environment and well-being. The data collected from these surveys is anonymized and displayed through interactive dashboards, helping us quickly identify trends, receive positive feedback, and pinpoint areas of improvement. Engaging in a long-term contract with Axon can offer several benefits. Here are some of the potential advantages. First of all, it is strategic investment. Axon offers a comprehensive package, and investment covers hardware, software, accessories, training, support, equipment replacement, and warranties. More importantly, it ensures that KPD will have a complete law enforcement solution for the next eight years. Axon's bundle solution enhances KPD's overall operational efficiency, and opting for the bundle solution saves the city approximately $3.1 million over the next eight years. Lastly, long-term contracts come with locked-in pricing or price instability clauses. This can protect the organization from fluctuations in the market price or inflation, providing budget predictability over the contract duration. Now, when you look at the refresh schedule, and when we receive the equipment, we get refreshed new body cameras, new Axon docs, VR headsets, tasers, and other devices that's going to be part of the refresh schedule automatically, so we don't have to pay for these items when there's a new upgrade or new system that comes out, that's automatically into the contract. The transition to Axon will streamline nine of the 13 existing technology functions, resulting in a cost reduction valued at $773,000. The nine items we can eliminate are current body worn cameras, the servers we use to store the videos, the command center software to access the videos, automatic license plate reader software, internal affairs software, non-warranty repair costs, redaction software costs, vigilant software costs, and repair parts for our in-car camera systems. I want to take a second to explain the second bullet. Currently, KPD employees spend 22 hours per month doing things that Axon can automate. Examples are tagging body worn camera videos, finding and tagging digital evidence, and writing reports. With 250 employees, that equates to about 5,500 hours per month. With Axon, we can cut that down to six hours per month, which is a 75% cut. The efficiency saved through Axon allows KPD to gain an additional 66,000 hours per year, so that employees can respond to citizens' calls for assistance. Adopting Axon's comprehensive suite of law enforcement tools would improve KPD's operational efficiency, employee safety, and community engagement. Axon's advanced technology, including body worn cameras, cloud-based evidence management, and real-time communication systems, will better equip our officers to manage the complexities of modern policing. Investing in Axon enhances transparency and accountability, and builds public trust through improved documentation and access to vital data. Embracing this technology is a proactive measure toward creating a safer, more connected, and more effective police force dedicated to serving the Colleen community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Chief. You did mention something that I think is wonderful, the feedback collection process. Just a question, where does that information go? Who will be responsible for collecting that data, and then what's the intended use for it once we receive it?
First of all, any data that, that we, that Axon collects, belongs to the city Colleen, the police department. So that data is ours. That data is...
Danny, if you want to help with that question there?
What's the second part of it?
Just who receives that information? So when you get the feedback, it's going to come to you directly?
Yes, ma'am. It comes to me through a dashboard and a report, and I can evaluate it, you know, on a weekly, monthly basis.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right? All right.
Chief, is it my understanding that this system will take the place of at least nine officers? But at the time, with the information that you have, you're surveying more than one place, if the members join in the community?
Are you talking about the FUSE's platform, the real-time crime center?
Yes, the real time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On July 18th, we're going to roll out the information on the FUSE's own platform. We're testing it right now. We have some cameras up that are live. We are working with some of our apartment complexes to get them on a trial basis. But we plan to roll out in the first week, second week in December, the whole platform.
My second part to that question, is there only one person that's going to man that center, or will it be more than one person that's manning all of these different places at one given time, when you roll it out?
No, no, ma'am. It's going to be three, the supervisor, and two call takers, going to be there 24 hours a day.
That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Chief. And we talked about this already, but I, I forgot to ask the question, is this, are you able to add additional, like if we add a, other intelligence information systems, would that be, is that scalable to include it on that?
Are you talking about video or digital evidence?
Any other type of systems that you may use to do law enforcement, be it intelligence information systems, or analytical systems, or whatever?
Yes, through our FUSE's platform, we're going to have the ability to integrate, like say, for example, if, if Bell County has Axon cameras, or Corpus Cove has Axon cameras, we could all integrate our systems into one to share data and intelligence. If, and you're correct, you're wrong, Danny. If Temple has, Temple has Axon cameras, and they have automatic license plate readers, so a stolen car that goes through Temple will automatically show up on our system, too, so we have that real-life information.
Yes, sir. Danny Thalen with Axon. Thanks for having me, guys. Yeah, to answer you directly, sir, you'll be able to add really apartment complexes, stores, anything like that, very simply, through a simple black box, that any business can then join to give information to the police department.
And additionally, if residents wanted to just, um, register their cameras with us, and there's no fee, no cost to that, they could also do that, too.
Councilmembers request for future agenda item. Counsel, you have two times to speak, each for five minutes. Madam Secretary?
RQ 24008, Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce Community Update.
Count Mayor Protem Gonzalez.
Sure. This request is simply based on the need for our previous chamber, Colleen Chamber of Commerce has briefed our council. The Innovation Black Chamber has quite a few community, community projects and progress to provide us information on, as well as grocery store updates. So I do think it's important that we hear from this other chamber, so that we can hear the works that they've done, and what we've got in our pipeline for our community. I hope that we have your support.
Thank you, Counsel. This is a future agenda item. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. It's not a, she has to request them. This is not a discussion item.
Mr. Jones, did you have something you wanted to say for the record?
Uh, Mr.?
Thank you, Adam.
My question is, is he doing an update on the chamber now, or?
No.
No, sir. No, sir. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. So, no, sir. Can you, once this is approved, you can discuss the item?
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you for catching that. Thank you. It's not a discussion item. It's just for the council to vote yes or no, if they want it for a future agenda item. Thank you, Councilmember Segarra, for catching that. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. And they're just coming to bring an update, like they have done before.
Was there a motion in a second?
A direction. Oh, God. Councilmember Adams. We go through this every time. There's a future agenda item. Councilmember Adams.
Madam ma'am, there's a motion of direction to bring this at the next meeting for presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
No, a second.
Are any discussion to ask Count Mayor Protem any questions about the item that's on the agenda, not going into a full discussion? If not, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Somebody, I'm sorry. This time I, this time I slipped. So, so all in favor, yes. Well, they already started voting. Councilmember Segarra. Thank you. Should be 7-0. Thank you all. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, move to adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Solomon, and I'm assuming you are second there, Councilmember Adams. But in the future, please click on, because Councilmember Boyd, he did follow protocol, and I feel bad not being able to call him. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Yes, sir. Motion carries. Yes, from Alvarez Corp? Okay, meeting adjourned. We will take a five, whenever you say it's ready, five to seven-minute break, and we'll come right back into our second meeting.